All right, everybody. It is pretty close to 6:00 PM, so we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Sarah, if you'll help us with the roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Mayor Holland?
Here.
Commissioner Messer?
Here.
Commissioner Finch?
Here.
Commissioner Normile?
Here.
Commissioner Taylor?
Here.
Commissioner Vogel?
Here.
Thank you, Sarah. Before we get started tonight, I'll make this kind of brief, and it's personal and at the house, but Hicks and Long family that I married into 20 years ago suffered two tragic losses on Saturday. Keep it real short. If we could just have a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to call on Commissioner Mark Taylor, who graciously agreed to leave us in our opening prayer. Commissioner Taylor?
All right, ladies and gentlemen, if you bow your head and let's pray. Heavenly Father, thank you so much for letting us all come out today and be healthy and be part of this great town that we're all get to live in and be part of it and enjoy what's around us and the people that surround us. We live in such a great place. It's an amazing place that most people seems like family. When I first came down here, it was you just get welcomed in with open arms and you know, you meet people on the street and their family. And there's some people out there that's hurting tonight and be with them and be strong with them and help them find the right path and the right way and let them feel your glory and your power and let some healing happen along the way. Bless us tonight. Let us make all the right decisions. Let us leave tonight all friends as we walked in here, and God bless Emerald Isle. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mark. If you'll please rise and face the flag and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Item number five would be the adoption of the agenda. May I ask for a motion to adopt?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. This is the part of the meeting I've been looking forward to for, I don't know, several weeks now. It's our proclamation session. We're going to shake things up a little bit tonight. For those of you in attendance that have public comment on your mind, rest assured you will get your time, but we're going to do things a little bit out of order tonight, and I'm very, very happy about it. I'll just kind of lead off and I'll wing it from there. I might ask one or two of you for some help, but our proclamations tonight are very, very special. During the North Carolina Department of Transportation's bridge construction in Emerald Isle, two of the construction contractors, Devlin and Tyrone Gilmore, brothers, kept our pastors by in good spirits and residents look forward to seeing them. The town of Emerald Isle very much appreciates the Gilmore brothers and their spirits. I believe, hey Dee, there he is. There he is right there. And I call him Dee. It's not like we go back many, many years, but I call him Dee because we shared phone numbers. I happened to have the opportunity at the time and got just right one afternoon or one morning, excuse me, about 10 after 9:00. Correct me if I'm wrong. I had a chance when I was coming on to Emerald Isle off the bridge to pull over. I was first in line and I got to pull over and have a conversation with Devlin, who, like I said, I now call Dee. We shared a couple of stories, shared a couple of laughs, a hug, a handshake, and phone numbers. And we've been working with Dee and his brother and Tammy. Tammy, are you here with us tonight? Remind me the contracting company you're with, please?
Labor Finders.
Labor Finders. Tammy got wind that I had invited Devlin and Tyrone to the meeting and she wanted to make sure she was here and make sure that the Gilmore family was here. Looks like you have some family there. Who's that in the back right there? Very good, very good. Well, thank you all for being here. I'm going to sit right here just for a second. I'm going to come around the table in just a moment, but I have a microphone here and I want to make sure all this is heard. But Tammy over at Labor Finders was gracious enough. I believe Devlin was working at Wallace today and reached out to me and said he wasn't sure if he was going to make it. Tyrone is in Virginia. Is that correct? We knew he wasn't going to be able to make it, and it was a little touch and go, a little iffy if, I was going to call you Dee. He texted me. I said, hey, I'll see you Tuesday. He said, hey, Mayor Holland, this is Dee. You're Dee, I'm Jason. He texted me and said he's working at Wallace, he'd do his best to make it here, and I want to give a big shout out to Labor Finders and especially Tammy, because when he told me he would try his best to be here, I said, it's not good enough. Dee needs to be here. And I reached out to Tammy and I said, please, whatever you can do, we've been looking forward to this night for a long, long time. I said, if there's any way possible to have Mr. Gilmore and his family here, please make that happen, and she did. So thank you, Tammy, and thank you, Labor Finders. At this time, I want to call Devlin up and his family. I want them to be up here with us, have a little something for you guys, okay?
And Mr. Holland, he's also a great handyman.
Oh, yeah?
For all of us people that need handyman.
That comes as absolutely, absolutely no surprise. Sarah, could you help me with, or someone help me with a microphone, please? And I need maybe one set of hands, two will work. Why don't you help me with that, please? If you'd hold those for me, please, that'd be great. I've got a copy here. You're not, the spotlight's over here, young man. Where's my hard copy?
How you doing, brother?
Nice to see you.
Thank you.
How you doing, sir?
Good to see you.
Thank you for coming, man.
We've had some good waves, very much.
What's your name, ma'am? I'm sorry?
Veronica.
Veronica, nice to meet you. I'm Jason. Pleasure. All right. I'm so sorry Dee couldn't be here with us tonight. This is going to be, he can watch it back. It's on Facebook. He'll be able to watch. All right. A proclamation honoring Devlin Gilmore and Tyrone Gilmore. Whereas the citizens of the town of Emerald Isle appreciate brothers Devlin and Tyrone Gilmore for their positive attitudes, and whereas they kept residents engaged and smiling while waiting to cross the bridge during the NC DOT bridge construction. Whereas the town appreciates their willingness to engage residents and leave everyone with a smile on their face. And whereas the town received calls asking if the Gilmore brothers were on shift so that residents could bring them food and well wishes. And whereas the town does wish to recognize and commend the hard work, dedication, and commitment of these two brothers, as they have proven to be a source of admiration and inspiration to the citizens of Emerald Isle. Now, therefore, I proclaim that I, Mayor Jason Holland, and the Board of Commissioners of the town of Emerald Isle, in honor of their spirit and upbeat attitudes, thank Devlin Gilmore and Tyrone Gilmore for boosting the town's spirits during the North Carolina Department of Transportation Emerald Isle Bridgework Construction. Proclaim this 11th day of April 2023, Jason Holland, Mayor, Emerald Isle. Thank you both from the bottom of my heart. Please, floor is yours. Hold it up low so they can hear you.
I just wanted to say thank you to everybody. Some days I didn't want to go out there because, you know, it was cold, windy, dah 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 dah, but when I got there, smiles, Miss Elizabeth, and there's some little people that'd be in car seats that'd be riding by, tripping me out, but they'd be like, hey. I'm like, hey, buddy. You know what I mean? Every dog barking at me, I love that, you know, but I appreciate y'all. I really do. Everybody, like I said, thank y'all.
Hey, buddy. You forgot you. We've got one for you, one for your brother as well. Make sure he gets that. You guys display it proudly. You earned it, and you didn't earn it because you had to work for it. You earned it because you're who you are, and the world could use so many more people like you, and I know from the bottom of my heart, you have inspired people to be more like you. I know when I see you boys coming on, coming off, rain, sleet, snow, shine, you're smiling, you're waving. Some days I've came across and I was having a bad day, and I see you, and there's a handful of people in my life when I see them, whether I'm having a good day, a bad day, or anything in between, I'm going to put a smile on my face when I'm around you because I know that's what you want from me. Devlin, you want to come up and chair the rest of this meeting for me? It looks like you're no stranger to a microphone, that's all. I love it. Thank you so much. All right. Now the boring stuff. No, just kidding, just kidding. All right. Item number seven will be the introduction of some new employees. I believe we're going to go quicker on this. First employee introduction would be Summer Akfaye. I hope I didn't hammer that too bad. Joining the Emerald Isle Police Department as Department Clerk. So welcome, Summer. Was it bad? Did I get it? Oh, that's the, sorry. Just the one?
No, sir. On our second, we'd like to share the video.
Your mic is not hot, sir, sorry.
The second new employee we'd like to welcome is Mark Cruz, our new Public Information's Officer, and we would like to share the video that Mark has so graciously put together, and we want to introduce him both in person. So, Mark, if you'd make your way out, we want to just let everybody see who you are. He is a real person, not just a gentleman I've got. This is Mark Cruz. Today, Mark's one week with us, and we'll let his video speak for him.
As I look out at the world around us, I am reminded of the power of new beginnings. Nature itself is full of examples of how new beginnings can bring about incredible growth and transformation. Think about a seed that's planted in the ground. At first, it is just a small, seemingly insignificant object, but with the right conditions, it begins to grow, pushing its way up towards the sky until it becomes a strong, vibrant plant. This process is a testament to the power of new beginnings. In the same way, we all have the potential for growth and transformation, it starts with recognizing that we have the power to make a change in our lives, to start anew. Whether it's a new job, a new relationship, a new hobby, the possibilities are endless. And just like the seed needs the right conditions to grow, we too need the right conditions to thrive. We need supportive people around us, a positive mindset, and the willingness to take risks and try new things. We can make connections with new people who inspire us and push us to be our best selves. Hello, I'm Mark Cruz, and I'm honored to have accepted the position of Public Information Officer for the town of Emerald Isle. I'm a North Carolina native, and I've spent my professional career creating media showcasing our beautiful state. I am passionate about North Carolina, the Crystal Coast, and my family's favorite island, Emerald Isle. I look forward to serving our community.
Very, very nice. Mark, thank you for being here, sir. Your reputation preceded you. We're grateful and very, very happy that you're here. Thank you, sir. Welcome. All right. Item number eight will be public service announcements. There we go. All right. Storytime and pre-K play held Mondays at 9:00 AM at the Community Center. Aid parking at the beach accesses begins April 15th. Police educating the public. Our next meeting will be held April 18th at 10:00 AM here in the Town Boardroom. We have a blood drive on April 21st from 1:00 PM to 5:30 PM at the Community Center. Operation Medicine Drop. Any expired unused medication can be dropped off April 22nd from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM in the Food Lion parking lot. Our next planning board meeting will be held April 24th at 6:00 PM in the Town Boardroom. Our next Coffee with the Cop meeting will be held April 27th at 9:00 AM here in the Town Boardroom. The next Golf Cart Advisory Committee meeting will be held April 28th at 5:30 in the Town The Beach Driving is closed for the season effective April 30th. Our next Neighborhood Watch Board meeting will be held May 2nd at 4:00 PM at the Police Bike to Banks is here for another year, thankfully, May 6th at 7:30 AM at the Community Center. Our next Board of Commissioners meeting will be held May 9th at 6:00 PM here in the Town All right. At this time, I believe Candace, there you go. Invite Candace Dooley up for an update on Parks and Recreation.
Thank you, Mayor and Board. It is an absolute delight to be with you this evening to showcase all of the wonderful things happening within our Community Center and our facilities, but to keep you from having to listen to me just ramble everything off up here and give you a boring slideshow, I'm able to showcase Mark's great talent. He and I were able to film a video last week, and so now we can give you a tour of what's happening within our Community Center and facilities. Enjoy.
Hi, I'm Candace Dooley, your Director of Parks and Recreation here in the town of Emerald Isle. I am delighted to be with you to showcase all the wonderful things happening here in our Community Center and our park facilities. Come take a tour with me and take a look. We are thrilled to have our new fence installed here on our tennis court, along with the wind fencing that our Parks and Recreation team installed to help you play better here on our courts. Pickleball and tennis are very popular sports here on Emerald Isle, not only for our residents, but our visitors as well. We absolutely know the importance of keeping our courts in pristine condition. Not only have we replaced the fence, we've also installed the wind fencing to help you play your best and protect you from the winds that are always blowing here on the island. We also placed sod around the entire court so that the balls don't run underneath the fence and to also beautify the area. We've installed a new practice board for you as well to improve your game. We look forward to resurfacing the courts here in the next 30 to 60 days. Here, you'll see that we only have two pickleball courts currently. Now, we're going to have four pickleball courts in addition to one on our basketball court once the resurfacing is complete. Within our facility, you may also check out the pickleball nets and paddles should you need them while visiting our courts. Once the resurfacing is complete, we will also install two new tennis nets and straps. It's going to be a brand new facility. Here, within our Community Center, our gymnasium is ready for a facelift. We plan on repainting all of the walls and the beams to give it a little bit of a facelift. This particular area is a multi-use area. It's used by not only our after-school program, summer day camp, aerobics classes, open play soccer, and basketball. We also rent out this space as needed to our community, so we look forward to having a wonderful facelift here within the gymnasium. As we plan all of these wonderful improvements for our Community Center, we also inspected the building for safety purposes. We found that everything is in sound condition, with the exception of our HVAC unit, which does need to be replaced and was approved by the Board of Commissioners in the fall of 2022. With supply chain issues, we are still waiting for the unit to come in. As soon as it arrives, our team will work to install it as soon as possible, and that will alleviate the slight drip that comes from our ceiling from time to time. Here, within our weight room, we are super excited as we have just received a grant thanks to the hard work of Sarah Deal, our Human Resources Director, and the North Carolina League of Municipalities. We've been awarded a grant for $2,500 to purchase a brand new Peloton bike. It'll be delivered soon, and we look forward to having it here in the weight room. One last, very exciting announcement that's coming here from the Community Center will be the replacement of the Howe Street walkway. This incredible donation made by a resident here in town of $29,950 will replace this beautiful walkway here in the very near future. We sincerely appreciate the donation from this resident and look forward to recognizing them in the very near future. It's been a delight to bring you on this tour. We look forward to seeing you within our parks and our facilities, whether you're a resident or a visitor to our community.
So a big thank you to Mark for that amazing production. I really appreciate how you showcased our facilities. And just as a quick update, since we filmed that just late last week, I've been able to secure the quotes and the purchase orders for not only the painting of the interior of our facility, but also the steam cleaning and sanitizing of our gym floors that will take place in the next couple of months. I look forward to improving our facilities as we always strive to do, and I appreciate the support of our Commissioners. Thank you very much for your support as we move through all of these endeavors to improve our facilities, and especially to our visitors and our patrons and our residents for your patience as we also work through all of this, as it takes time and part of our budget to work through. So again, thank you very much to everyone. I really appreciate this opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you, Candace. Very well put together. Again, Mark, welcome aboard. Thank you for that video. It's very well done. Candace, thank you for the updates. And regarding the Howe Street public access, I know the resident that contributed to that wishes to remain anonymous, but you know who you are, you know what you did. I want to extend my sincerest thank you to that person as well. Welcome up Billy Mathias, Department Fire Chief, and for our 2023 Beach Safety Update.
Good to see everybody here tonight. Thank you for having us. Good to see a turnout that we have for citizens and visitors potentially here. Just want to give a brief update of where we're standing at on 2023 ocean safety. And so I've got a, don't have a great video such as that. I don't know how to follow that up, Mark. Thanks a lot. It's usually Mike telling me that he doesn't like to follow me now. I'm going to have to get ahead of you. But anyways, just want to give a brief update. We've already had some key things kickoff for us, April 1st, with lifeguards being on the beach strand. We do have a skeleton crew out there. We do have our towers open at West and East Regional Access where we have manned lifeguards. We do have at least one to two roving patrols occurring, stepping that up on weekends. And so I don't have a clicker up here. But we have been working hard to train. We actually started training the end of March, and so if you hear like some sniffles, it's just because I've been in 60-degree water for the past two weeks or so, and so I promise you I'm not sick, I'm just trying to warm up still. Recapping our initiative for public outreach, right here with the table toppers, QR stickers, town calendars that you can see there behind Sergeant, and also over there you might have some beach magnets. Yep, right there. Thank you, sir. Hey, I'll take that. But unified flag system across both banks, again, we're keeping that in place. It's a huge success for us, working with our municipalities up and down both banks here. Our Heroes Academy, getting that initiative kicked off again, reinforcing that, working with, actually have letters going on out to Food Lion here on the island and Publix Corporate as far as trying to get some video messaging in those. As you see as you walked in, the Rip Current videos, the Beach Flag videos, trying to get those in some of those areas where we have that transient population. So as I mentioned already, April 1st, our lifeguards hit the beach strand. Right now, we're currently setting at about 17 lifeguards. We've got two coming in that we're going to start their training here probably in about a week or so, and then we'll have about two to three more come in the first week of May. No different from any previous years, we would work a skeleton crew up until by the week before Memorial Day weekend, and so once we get into that week before Memorial Day weekend, we'll be full staff. Our continued partnership with the National Weather Service, one of the huge achievements I've seen this year, we just had our Integrated Warning Team meeting right here in this room with a huge turnout from partners across eastern North Carolina, up and down both banks and out of Wilmington. But I've pushed for many years for our flag system, which banks off of the Rip Current forecast to start earlier than April 15th. Due in part to the outer banks being in our forecast region, their waters are colder up there, but we were able to push that start date for that Rip Current forecasting up till this past Friday, so April 7th. So I take that as a win, but it's a huge success. We've tried for several years to get them to increase that Rip Current forecasting start date for us, and we've actually made some progress. Again, touching on some of our educational aspects here, some of the few metrics that we track, our water rescues, warned swimmers, welfare checks, identify problem surf areas, and public education. Those welfare checks, you may see somebody out in the water. Our guards are hitting water. It's not a true emergency. They get out there, they're waving to their mom or waving to their dad for a photo op back at the beach strand. The guards are hitting the water. Instead of it actually being a true emergency, we chalk that up to a welfare check. Those warned swimmer numbers, we're warning those swimmers, that is not a number that is duplicated in the public education. Our goal still is to educate the public out there on the beach strand, not only when we're changing flags, but every day. Anytime we're out there training, our guards are educated and can talk about safety. One of the shifts from last year, we started out with a second shift for lifeguards, and that second shift for lifeguards is what we were trying to curve here. And you see in 2021, we had 13 calls. They were not missed, but we did not have a representation on the beach strand as far as ocean rescue lifeguards are concerned. So those calls were solely answered by Emerald Isle Fire Department out of either 7516 Emerald Drive or 2810 Emerald Drive. And so what we were trying to curve is our presence on the beach strand in the evening hours. And so 2022, you saw that, we only had two calls that was difference. So our efforts there, we seen as a positive, and those two calls, the metrics came in between 7:30 and 8:00. So right as the guards were getting off the beach strand to clean up their equipment, they were still able to respond, but it is chalked as we didn't have representation on the beach strand. Again, key focuses going forward, growing educational programs. We're currently set up with Western Carter at Library for an event in May, local businesses here in Emerald Isle. We have some safety initiatives going into those businesses as far as classes and educational speaking opportunities. White Oak Elementary School, I can't speak enough as far as our children's population, letting them know, educating them, and so we found that those children get educated, they'll let mom and dad know, hey, it's red. We're not going out there to play, let's go to the movies instead. So still focusing on those educational outreach opportunities. I mentioned a slide ago about the revised second shift, so we've actually modified that a little bit. We're still going to have a later shift. However, we're rolling out with four guards at 10:30 on the beach strand patrolling, and then at 12:00 noon, we'll have three additional guards to get to a full staffing when we go that week before Memorial Day. And once we get to full staffing at noon, typically our peak of our day, typically when we have low tide or tide change, those three guards will actually be staying on until 7:30 in the afternoon, in the evening, should I say. So not only will we increase our coverage in the evening hours, but we're actually benefiting our deployment. Some of you may have noticed these additional signs up and down Emerald Drive and Coast Guard Road. We do have four of these signs. One is down Emerald Drive on Third Street, and so then we have this one here, as you see pictured, is at the East Regional Access. We have one just before Island Drive on Emerald Drive, and then one on Coast Guard Road. So the placement of these was tried to benefit the most people possible. And so... And so we picked a placement, these will turn on when we get a red flag. Obviously, if we go double red flag, they'll be on as well, but they can cycle for 12 hours once we initiate them. They are solar powered, operate off a key fob. April 1st not only started our lifeguard season this year, but it also opened up registration for junior guards. Junior guard is just about full. Our 13- to 17-year-old group is always a little bit slower, teenagers deciding what they want to do this summer. But we do have two classes for the 9- to 12-year-old group, and so those are sold out. Can't say it enough for the support, Emerald Isle Beach Patrol, they not only sponsored last year's junior guard program, all three sessions, they are again sponsoring, stepping up to the plate, all three sessions of this year's junior guard program. This is one of the events that we just had occurred in this room. We had a Integrated Warning Team meeting with the National Weather Service. Over the prior two, three years, this has been a virtual meeting. So what you see there is National Weather Service at a Newport office, the Wilmington office, WINT meteorologist, WCTI was here. Those fire and emergency rescue agencies were here as well. There were presentations given, Wrightsville Beach, Fire and EMS, Ocean Rescue, myself, the National Weather Service gave us their initiatives of public education. And so this is where we found out the information of what the National Weather Service is doing this year as to warn, and you'll see on this next slide, warn the people traveling to our areas. This was a slide out of National Weather Service Wilmington, I believe. And so this shows a North Carolina, South Carolina rip current fatalities for the past 22 years. And so all those little black dots has been one person, as you see the bright red dots are two, and the darker red are three. And so biggest focus that I took out of this map, and it gets up year to year, but Vicki, who was the meteorologist here, speaking on behalf of the Wilmington office, she pointed out that there's a lot of black dots inland in North Carolina, and trying to educate. So the National Weather Service is working with other National Weather Service agencies inland to push out the rip current forecasting for when they plan to come to our area and visit. So that was one of the huge initiatives as far as the National Weather Service is doing. I think they also said they're working with Buffalo, New York, also up in Ohio, I believe, Kentucky, I think it was Kentucky, actually, that they're working with those offices up And that's what I have. So just a brief update of 2023, our season is already started. We are out training, guards are training every morning. We're constantly bringing on new guards for our full staffing. I had the opportunity to meet or present at the Neighborhood Watch. Great turnout there. Amazing to share that information. Heard Mayor Holland talk about the PEP, Police Educating the Public. I encourage y'all to come out to that. I'll be speaking on the 18th of this month at that. And if you want to learn more about lightning, rip currents, flags, anything that we do here in Emerald Isle, I'll be there, so.
Thank you, Billy. Very well done. Thank you. Thank you and your team. Thank you.
Hey, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Can I catch Captain Mathias with a quick comment before he? It's Tuesday, he probably already has his 40 hours in. We're in season.
Proceed, sir.
It'll save time at the end of the meeting, my planned notes for the end of the meeting.
Carry on.
Real quick, Captain Mathias, I noticed in the Department Head report, there's a fundraiser coming up for Claire. Claire's one of our engineers at the Fire Department, veritably his son has been battling cancer for some time. And so I don't know how else to put it, but our community's really nice. They're a giving group, and I know you're participating in a fundraiser, 16th, 17th? Help me out. 16th? Been placing baseball, I think, at Big Rock Stadium.
Correct.
So my question is, I don't want to embarrass Claire or the family or ask for an update on their, on their son, but how can we help? Is there a mechanism that maybe if somebody wants to make a donation to help the family out?
Yeah. So first off, Claire Atchison, he's been with us since 2017. He was a hire with a safer grant, and I can honestly say I love that guy to death. And so I've had Kayden in junior lifeguard program, hardworking just like his dad is, and first come down with this knowledge of him having cancer. It's B-cell lymphoma, currently still seeing oncology in UNC Chapel Hill. But there are two great events coming up, and I'll lay this paperwork back here at the back table and set some of it aside. But the Morehead City Fire and EMS auxiliary, I've got friends in Morehead City, but they, every year, they've been a dude what, excuse me, do a softball gang that benefits someone in our area, local here in Carteret County, and they raise money. And all that proceed goes back to whoever they have chosen for that year. This year happens to be one of our own, and we will be playing softball April 16th. Give me a second.
Take your time, sir.
But myself and Claire will be out playing softball. If I miss any balls at first base, don't yell at me, but trying to pick up some practices down there. It's a great time, I've been to a couple of them, it is at Big Rock Stadium. The game is at 3 o'clock. It's a $5 admission, and kids under 5 are free, raffles, games, music, more. It is boots first badges, so it's firemen versus cops, the biggest rivalry of all time. Forget, forget about tombstone, you've never seen firemen and cops go, no, just playing. Love you, Nick. There's also a second event, again, that softball game is this Sunday, April 16th at 3:00 p.m. at Big Rock Stadium. For those who, hopefully the weather's good, on Saturday, April 15th, there is a Boots First Badges Benefit Ride that's going to be Morehead City Fire and EMS and Police Department. And so you must have a motorcycle, a Jeep, or an antique car, et cetera, is all they say. So, and that ride is going to take place at the Kmart parking lot in Morehead City at 4915 Rendell Street, and it's going to make the circle down the island and back around. The entry for that is $5, or $20 for a single rider, $5 for each passenger, and lunch is being provided by Social Q. So again, Kayden's a strong, strong kid, he's been positive, he's kept his dad positive during it all. But yes, it's, it's near and dear. I'll be out there playing, sweating, and making myself look bad, but thank you for the time to talk about that.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot, the family on the spot. It's a very giving community, and I think if we can help, we will. Does that sound right? Thanks.
Thank you, Billy, and thank you for the question, Commissioner Normal. Do everything we can to wrap our arms around the Atchison family, support them, lift them up however you can. Next up, have Matt Zap give us a Progressive Goals update and update on our Pack It In, Pack It Out program.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much. For those of you that aren't aware, we do have the goals list available. There should be some physical hard copies at the agenda table. In addition, as we begin here, our IT Director, Greg Hayes, will pull this up. All this information is posted and available online at our town website, so you can go right to the Town of Emerald Isle and pull this up and keep an updated eye on what we're doing. But I just wanted to bring some highlights to the board and for the public's benefit that we have a 23-point list, just coincidental for 2023, but we have our immediate goals, which are between January and December of this year, and wanted to give you a first-quarter update of where we are in our progress and some of the things that our staff has been entrusted to focus upon. Our first and highest goal is always our 20, 23, 24 budget, which is our fiscal year budget. And for those that aren't aware, our budget runs from July 1st through June 30th each fiscal year. So our board had had its kickoff meeting in early January. Our staff has already met to work through the beginning portions of our budget process. So we are working with our finance office, all of our department heads, and trying to assemble our near $12 million budget for July 1st, so that is continuing on. Item two is the continued beach safety efforts, and you saw what Deputy Chief Mathias has helped us do year over year over year. And the takeaway that I have, if you took an opportunity to look at that, was the amount of statistics that have dropped in the positive. The amount of contacts are up, the amount of incidents are down, and if you just look at our scorecard over the last 48 months, it's very, very impressive, and we are thankful to everyone, Chief Walker, all the way through that entire organization. And as Deputy Chief Mathias indicated here today, we have 17 exceptional people already signed back up that are USLA certified, and we're looking for a few more good men and women that are over the age of 18, the ability to swim in open water, and to also pass a myriad of other certifications. So we continue to do that, and we want to thank the guards that are here with us out early beginning effective April 1. Item three on the list is the planning department, and we had a Phase 1, Phase 2 approach in our Unified Development Ordinance process. Phase 1 was approved in the first quarter. We are currently working through Phase 2, and that is set to come before this board sometime in the June, July, August timeframe, so we'll continue to do our good work there in planning. I'm going to skip down to item number eight. We hope that you saw tonight our opportunity and how thankful we are in just one week's time of the new hire with Mark Cruz on staff. We're going to continue to enhance, improve, and build upon our public communications, public awareness programs. One of those in specific is the Beach Heroes Program, and we were entrusted to purchase and install those solar signs, and you can see that they're already up with the start of the season, so thank you to our staff for doing that. Item number nine is the replacement of storm-related equipment, and we're currently working with FEMA funds. Again, this is non-tax dollars to purchase a dump truck and a tractor, and our staff is currently working through those steps and trying to procure those items. The dump truck is at a cost of near $90,000, and that front-end loader is at a cost of near $40,000. In McLean Spell Park, we had indicated in the previous presentation that Candace was kind enough to share how Sarah Deal has helped us apply for and receive $2,500 in funding for a new Peloton bike that will be used not just by staff, but also by our community. While we were on those same calls, we inquired about the opportunity to apply for outdoor funding, and so we're in the queue. We haven't gotten the golden seal of approval yet, but we are very optimistic that we have applied for and will continue to work towards an additional $2,500 that will offset the cost to develop, build, and install exercise stations at the walking trail at McLean Spell Park in our natural environment. Item number 11 is our radio system upgrade. That was a near half a million dollar cost that was avoided and will be funded through FEMA 428, and thank you to not just Laura Rochford, Bill Mathias, and the entire team, but we had some outside help to work through the provisions, requirements, and all the steps to purchase those radios at a near half a million dollar investment. So when you need to make a phone call and you have to dial 911 on potentially your worst day, we'll be able to hear the call, interoperability, enroll our safety equipment. So that is major and important to us. Item number 12, anyone here on our 26% of the population that uses Coast Guard Road? So we had 4,108,000 cars that went through the intersection at Coast Guard and 58, and 26-ish percent rolled down Coast Guard Road at 1,139,000 plus or minus cars. And we identified that with the improvements that were needed on Coast Guard, we used our Powell Bill funds, nearly $175,000 to make a major upgrade on Coast Guard Road, and that pavement has been installed and has been put down. Want to let the public know again, the reason there aren't stripes yet installed, industry standard is to wait approximately 30 days for those oils to make their way to the surface so that when we re-stripe Coast Guard Road, which will be striping from 58 all the way down to the end of the road, that those stripes, hash marks, and center divider lines will stay. So we're about another 21-ish days away, and then the striping will continue on Coast Guard. Skipping down to item number 15, one of the items that we do each year is we work on our fleet vehicle system, which is a revenue, positive revenue neutral opportunity for the town to control costs. And in the last 21 days, we have sold $89,750 in surplus equipment, so a near tick away from $90,000 in additional funds back to the town, which is exceptional, and that's attributed to our entire team, not just our staff that maintains the equipment, but those that help prepare it for sale, those that posted it. That was excellent work, so that's a near $90,000 catch. Item 16, we're pleased to report that with nearly 36,000 stops on yard debris collection last 12 months, we have stopped at most of your houses multiple times throughout 2022, and we've picked up a tremendous amount of yard debris. In that process to control costs, to remain green and do a better job, we have procured land in Pelletier on NC 58, and our staff has been taking material to that site since early January, so that now project is moving forward and continuing on. The NC DOT, item number 17, Coast Guard Road Turn Lane Extension, that was a part and parcel to the fact that we were able to track all the vehicles that are traveling through our community, and so between IT, my office, and our communications with Department of Transportation, they were able to extend that Coast Guard Road Turn Lane, which was an extremely important move, and they did that steadfast and quick in conjunction with bridge traffic. So we do want to thank DOT for all their help in moving the vehicles through our community. So that was paid for by the Department of Transportation, but item number 17 is now at 100%. And then moving down to item 21, we began an exploratory meeting to continue to talk about traffic improvements and how to continue to move vehicles, people, and goods safely through our community. And then that brings us into item 22. And I would prefer to finish off like we started with a video, so I know my presentation is a bit more blasé fare and vanilla in style, but the hard work comes in the detail. So we have also been able to begin that carry-in, carry-out, or what we refer to as the Pack It In, Pack It Out, Leave No Trace program, and we want to thank Mark Cruz for helping us provide an additional PSA video on that program. And with that being said, if there's any questions, I'll take the questions from the board now, and then we'll go ahead and cap off tonight's update with the rolling of the video.
Questions for the board? Proceed, please.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Here in Emerald Isle, we are proud of our clean, green beaches. In order to keep them pristine, we have implemented the Pack It In, Pack It Out program here in Emerald Isle. Let me explain more. Pack It In and Pack It Out is just new to Emerald Isle. Many other state parks and beaches have already used this program, such as Nags Head, Carolina Beach, Cape Hatteras National Seashore, and many more, and with great success. Pack It In, Pack It Out simply asks you that what you bring to the beach, you take away with you. At the end of each walkway will be a trash bin and a recycle bin, where you can dispose of the things that you have used on your beautiful day at the beach. The Town of Emerald Isle maintains 75 beach access points here along the Atlantic Ocean. Approximately 22 high-density locations will retain their trash containers on the beach strand during the peak season. We look forward to seeing the success of this project, Pack It In, Pack It Out. So pick up after your pets, no glass on the beach, fill your holes, and reduce the use of plastic. Thanks for packing it in and packing it out.
All right, thank you. Thank you all very much. Item number nine on the agenda tonight will be our public comment. If you missed it, there was a sign-up sheet to your left as you walked into the boardroom. We'll open the floor for a public comment now. Please remember that public comment is limited to three minutes per person. When we get to a minute, I'll just kind of hold a pen up. You don't have to stop, but we'll be at a minute there. So we will let Ms. Sarah call our first public commenter. When you're ready, of course. Take your time.
After all those comments, y'all not going to like me. I hope you do. You might like me and you might not, but I've got some, you know, my name is Ronnie Watson. I appreciate y'all letting me speak. For y'all's information, I'm the oldest living permanent resident on Emerald Isle. That probably means nothing to you guys, but it means a lot to me. My daddy brought me here in 1958, and you know, we came down through Sauter Path, didn't have a road, but he liked to fish, didn't have no money, but he fell in love with Emerald Isle. And I just want to say something, you know, I love this place. And you know, my daughter's the first native-born child on Emerald Isle. And Steve Matthews, my partner, I hope he's here tonight, we started the Emerald Isle Beach Music Festival. And the reason we did that in '79 through '99 is because nobody didn't know about Emerald Isle. And we would go places, give out tickets, and they'd say, hey, where's Emerald Isle? But Emerald Isle has been found, and you know, and it's been found. But you know, some things that are really bothering me, and I just, it seems like we're, the spending is out of control. I look at other towns, and I'm going to give you some comparison tonight, but I look at other towns and... at other towns and they seem like they've got them in control. But I don't want us to get like the federal government, spend, 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 but it reminds me of that. And if we keep hiring more people, we're going to have to build another municipal building to have the people so we can put them in it. And it, we just, I'm going to talk to you about something. Atlantic Beach, let me put my glasses on because I'm about half blind. Atlantic Beach has a $9.8 million budget. $3.8 million is in payroll and benefits. That's 39% of their budget is going in for payroll and benefits. They have 56 full-time employees and 64 part-time employees. Pine Noe Shores has a $5 million budget, but they don't have any of this stuff is not earmarked. Kate Carteret, $2.8 million budget, $745,923 goes into their payroll and benefits. That's 26% of their budget. Morehead City has a $30 million budget, $30.3 million budget. Payroll and benefits is $16.7 million. That's 55% of their payroll and benefits are going out of their budget. They have 175 full-time employees, 45 part-time employees. That gives a total of 220 part-time and full-time employees. Both of them is a $16.2 million budget, $7.9 million in payroll and benefits. That's 49% of their budget is going into payroll and benefits. Emerald Isle, 10 years ago, was $7.2 million budget, had $3.8 million in payroll and benefits. That's 53%. Five years ago, Emerald Isle had a $9.4 million budget, $4.7 million budget coming payroll and benefits. This year is $12.2 million, $7.2 million is in payroll and benefits. That's over 60% of our budget is in payroll and benefits. That's 75 full-time employees, 140 part-time employees. That's 215 total employees that we have at Emerald Isle. Something needs to be done about this.
Excuse me, Ronnie. Ronnie, I'm sorry to interrupt you, sir. We're on past three minutes. If you would, finish. Sorry, doesn't work. Finish your thought, please, sir. Thank you.
Well, you know, y'all, I asked who's leading the town? The employees work for the taxpayers of Emerald Isle. Y'all are the leaders, but I don't know who the leader is anymore. But they work for the taxpayers of Emerald Isle and we've got to quit spending money like it grows on trees. We'll keep spending, spending and spending and we're not saving. And it doesn't leave any money for infrastructure. I'm going to ask my assistant to pass something out to you if it's okay.
Yeah, we'll finish the comment and we'll take your hand out and we'll move forward, sir. Thank you.
She'll give you a packet and if you will look at it and don't throw it in the trash, I sure would appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank you for being here.
I'm finished.
Who do we have up next, Sarah?
Randy Hanford.
Thank you. Hey, Randy.
Hey, Chase. First of all, Chase, let me say my prayers are with you and your family.
Thanks, sir. I appreciate that very much.
My name is Randy Hanford. Good evening, council members and mayor. I've been a permanent resident here for 24 years. I started coming here in the mid-'60s. I was a ferry rat. My sister and I rode mini bikes up and down the beach and down the main road, almost the Sault d'Path and back. Coast Guard road was sand. I've been here a long time. I've seen a lot of changes. The changes I've seen in the last few years, I don't think are all good. There have been, there have been some things happening that just don't agree with. One of the things I was going to talk about, I keep hearing about the community center. So today I stopped by the community center and I want to say thank you to Candace and Drew, Drew's here. I think those girls worked really hard to keep that place. You can tell because of the organization that they're working hard to do what they can do. They don't have a lot to work with over there, y'all. If, I can't, I would say this, that what they need is funding. And you talk about steam cleaning that floor, I've been around a lot of floors in my businesses for 43 years. I don't know that that can be done. They need funding to fix the place, not patch the place. And so if the inside of my restaurants looked like the inside of that building, I would be out of business in a month. How did it get that bad? Why did we get to this point? Then now we're going to steam clean it. Come on, y'all. So anyway, and we talk about budgeting and spending. I was told by one of the council members that you guys just voted for five new $100,000 electric police cars. True or false? I guess I can ask the question. You were paying about $50,000 per car. So you went from $250,000 for purchases or leases to over a half million dollars. Prioritize, in business, you have to prioritize things. This government's nothing but a business. And why not take some of that money to fix the community center instead of patch it? The roads need work. Things, there's a lot that needs to be done that aren't getting done because of the way the money's being spent. The roads, what you should do one day if you haven't in a long time, get in your car and drive from one end of Sound Drive to the other and then go get your shocks changed because the road is in that bad a shape. Frank Rush left us better than this. Okay? Frank, he left us with a more healthy environment. He left us walking, jogging, biking paths from one end to the other. He was in my business often. Every couple of months, Josh Edmondson was in my business often, Alicia Sanderson in my business often, not to eat, but to talk. I've had two of you guys in my business, Mark and Steve have been in my business to talk. I've not seen anybody else in my business. So I think you need to get back to doing business the way it used to be done instead of through emails and telephones. Meet us face-to-face and talk to us.
Good job.
Thank you, Randy. Yes, ma'am.
Brian Niclo.
All right. Hey, Brian. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Brian Niclo. I'm with J6 Nation out of Carteret County. I'm here to just impart a little bit of information and plant a seed on things you might want to research. Don't take it from me, I'm just going to talk and I'll talk quickly because I know times, I want to respect your time. First, they came for the socialists and I did not speak out because I was not a socialist. Then they came for the trade unionists and I did not speak out because I was not a trade unionist. Then they came for the Jews and I did not speak out because I was not a Jew. Then they came for me and there was no one left to speak for me. This is Martin Neumoller, who was a prominent pastor during Germany 1920s, 1930s. I read you this because today in America, we have stolen elections, political prisoners and arbitrary government. As a citizen of this county, I'm going to each and every level of government to request that they rededicate themselves to a constitutional and based on the principles which promote liberties of the people. People should be able to live and work with the confidence that every elected official is upholding the values of the Constitution and protecting the rights of the people. What can you do about this as people's representative in a small coastal community? For one, you could read, learn and understand the Constitution. I'm supporting a group who's now getting instructors, constitutional instructors, they'll be going throughout the county, teaching the Constitution and will be promoting those. Secondly, you can personally voice your guidance and/or objections to your local, state and federal representatives. Three, you can collectively petition higher levels of government on behalf of the people you represent. Four, you can reject arbitrary government and covert globalist operations from infiltrating body politic and community via such things as ESG, CRT and DEI, which is often done through various government grants and loans. You asking them why they're putting all that money into electric vehicles? Maybe they have no choice. That loan came earmarked and they have hooks. When you agree to a grant or a loan, sometimes you have to spend it a certain way. So be careful of what you're doing. I want to inform you that every night outside the Washington DC prison, there's a group of patriots who hold a vigil on behalf of the political prisoners. This vigil is held from 7:00 PM to shortly after 9:00 PM every night. And at 9:00 PM every night, the political prisoners sing the national anthem. They've been, many of them have been in jail for over two years. Some have not been, had their trial. And the 25% of them, more than 25% of them are veterans. Also be aware that four people died as a result of the J6 event. This was Ashley Babbitt, Roseanne Boylan, Benjamin Phillips and Kevin Greason. These were civilians, these were not cops. Brian Sicknick died the day later due to natural causes caused by a stroke and blood clot. If you didn't know that, then you need to do some research. No officer died as a result of the January 6 events. Please look up this website, wearegoodmen.com. And our J6 Nation, we're dedicated to education, awareness and fundraising for these political prisoners. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Before we call our next public, we have another one, I'm assuming? Okay. Before we do that, ladies and gentlemen, everybody in the audience from front to back, I want to remind everybody that we are a civil town. This section of the agenda is for public comment. It's not for debate. It's not for dialogue. And I would ask each and every one in the room, regardless of whether you agree with what the next public commenter, any other commenter that comes before or after that person is, to respect their time as you wish your time would be respected. If you're unable to do so, I'd ask you to excuse yourself from the board meeting. Sarah, next, please.
Paige Taylor Ward.
Good evening, Paige.
Hi. My name is Paige Taylor Ward and I live at 326 Live Oak Street. I'm here to voice my concerns regarding our vegetation and our lack of code enforcement. There are clear-cut lots all over this island. We've been talking about this probably for two to three years. For some reason, y'all seem to think that there's a gray area. The only gray area is lack of code enforcement. It boils down to a grading permit and how they are issued. Our ordinance 6.4.4 states that the area is supposed to be staked off, S-T-A-K-E-D. That means that contractor gets out of his truck. He does not put a yellow ribbon around the old oak tree. What we're doing is wrong. If the vegetation officer doesn't see what is clearly written in our ordinance, he does not issue the permit. He drives off. The next time he calls for an inspection, if it's staked off, you issue the permit. There have been several calls about this one issue. I don't know what's so hard about it. There is nothing in the gray area other than lack of code enforcement. Our lots are clear all over this island. Our ordinance also states that if it has already been cleared, they have to re-vegetate the lot. None of this is being done. When your new structure goes in, all that does is put stormwater on adjacent property owners. Again, according to our ordinances, this is illegal. The fact that we've changed our UDO to include the right-of-way as part of the 35% is ludicrous. The homeowner doesn't own that property. It's for utilities. I don't understand how we are issuing permits that violate our own ordinances. There's so many non-compliant lots on this island, it's unbelievable. How do we plan on making them compliant? We will never be able to undo all the damage that is caused from lack of code enforcement. If you don't live here, then you don't understand these storms. You haven't experienced them firsthand and you don't understand the importance of the vegetation here. It's our first line of defense against the storms and make no mistake about it, the storms will continue to come. We're not being good stewards. Every property owner should be aware of the vegetation and the protection and soil stabilization on the island. When is this madness going to stop?
Thank you, Paige.
Jeff Ward.
Ronnie, I don't know if you'll agree with everything I'm going to say either, but I love you, brother. Early last year, I emailed Mr. Zap and the Commissioner several times to voice concerns about the loss of town employees and about concerns about employee retention. Rhonda Farabee, town clerk, 25 years. Tony Reese, police chief, five years. Bill Bailey, assistant police chief, 10 years. Whitney Smith did not even stay a year and she was the assistant parks and rec director. Already done, public works, 15 years. Gail Knapp, tax collector, town admin, 12 years. Paige Taylor Ward, permit tech, town admin, three years. Josh Evanson, planning director, five years. Billy Walker, fire chief, 30 years. Rachel Kelly, finance tech, three years. Alicia Sanderson, parks and rec director, 30 years. Anna Smith, public information officer, recently went to school to get her clerk certification for Emerald Isle, got it and quit and is now working as a clerk in Morehead City. We've lost many valuable employees in the last three or four years. Some did retire, maybe earlier than they had planned. Some quit or resigned and some were basically forced to resign. We no longer collect taxes, they're farmed out. We no longer issue permits, they're farmed out. We no longer have a building inspector, not only to enforce building codes, but they also made sure that their vegetation ordinances were enforced as related to site plans prior to building. It's been farmed out. All big money savers, I guess, but all the services that EI used to provide, it no longer does. Yet the town decides to hire a communication specialist for $70,000 a year. Maybe that could have been farmed out as well. This is an email that was sent in 2014 and is part of town. In capital letters, "It is my top priority to make sure every caller gets a live person when they call during normal work hours or a time when the caller should expect someone to be working in your department. Think about how you would feel when you are trying to get help from a company and you can't get a live person to help you. Extremely frustrating and I don't want our customers to have that experience." Well, that email was sent by Frank Rush to every department head, March the 13th, 2014. Jump ahead nine years and now we have a town hall phone tree. We're more concerned about social media presence than a live person answering our phones. We do have employee retention problems. We farm down our services. We have code and ordinance enforcement issues and our town hall resembles a ghost town. Just food for thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Jeff.
Lori Ahuna.
Hi, Lori.
Good evening, Lori Ahuna, La Lali Street. I'm here to talk about the community center. Once again, I represent about two dozen members of the community center. Several are here tonight and watching and we're all still very concerned with its current state of disrepair and neglect. I met with Laura Rochford two weeks ago to talk about bookkeeping and Jamie and Candace and Matt joined in because they knew what my concerns were. And Candace has addressed some of those things tonight in the video and I thank you for all that. I'm so thrilled to learn that the roof is solid. There are several other items though. That's, those are not the only things. There's a lot going on there and I've been communicating with Matt and we're, to try to ensure that those things are continually being worked on as possible because I know not everything happens like that, but that's how I want it done. So I know he's passed those things on to you and I hope you are encouraged to press on and get something done at the community center now. I know you're working on the budget now, so now is the time. These are my particular concerns tonight because I have a bookkeeping background, so I look at the money and try to figure it out. And if I'm wrong, I apologize and you can tell me later and I will admit it. In our meeting, I asked for an income and expense report on the community center and I was told I was told that the town doesn't keep a record of it like that. So there's no record of a profit and loss for that facility like that. So I'm shocked, as to me, standard business practices would dictate that you would know what that facility actually costs to operate against the revenues that it generates. Number two, I had hoped that some of that $16,000 income from the St. Patrick's Festival would go towards the community center, as Jamie mentioned back in that January budget meeting. I'm not going to let you forget that. But today, and today's, as I was looking through the agenda meeting minutes, I see that that $16,000 has gone back to the Parks and Rec Fund to offset the cost of the festival. But what is missing is what were the expenses, what were the costs of the festival? So that wasn't included in the memo. So I don't have all the equation there. Number three, I'm seeing in your reports that the town sold some surplus property, and that resulted in an unexpected $48,000 windfall. Well, that's great. That's what I saw somewhere. I saw 89, and then I saw 48,000 in somewhere in those minutes or memos. So if that's true, that's awesome, and that's almost half the cost of a new gym floor. So send it our way, please. And then if that is true about the town purchasing five electric cars, 500, it's not true? Thank God. All right, because I was gonna freak out.
Listen, I'm close to finishing. If you finish your thought, please, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, so the items that need to be done at the gymnasium are certainly not unreasonable. They are just, should have been handled, general maintenance over the years, but we are where we are, and the gym requires a lot of attention right now. We only want a clean, bright, safe community center that represents the best, because our town is the best. I'm not asking you to fix up my house. I'm asking you to fix up our house. If you have a chance, you have a chance here to be fiscally responsible and generate a lot of goodwill in the process. So please, listen and act. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Yes, ma'am.
Debbie Buckley.
Hi. You can sacrifice my three minutes. Everybody's addressed what I was going to say. It's about the community center.
Thank you for coming. Thank you for being here.
Annette Ruth.
Hey, Annette.
Hello, and thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm Annette Ruth. I live on Loblawli Street. I'm not going to go in and talk about a lot of things that everybody else has already spoke about, but I did want to briefly discuss "Pack It In and Pack It Out." I don't understand it. Why do we have to be like everybody else? Why can't we just be Emerald Isle and we continue to do trash the way we had? So it seems like the beach driving, it just kind of like was announced, and then the town got involved, and then you realize that, oh, we're not going to change the beach driving. Where did "Pack It In and Pack It Out" come from? I mean, we know Carolina Beach and Outer Banks is using it, but why is it important that we do it here? I think it's, I don't know, it's kind of confusing. So we saw a pretty video, but we're not, I think we might regret it, but I hope that the town will prove us all wrong, and it'll be all good. Another thing I'd like to talk about is signage. The other day at McLean Spell Park, I saw too many bikes and a golf cart come flying out of the trails. I think we need to do a better job with improving signage. You know, we've got pedal-assist bikes. We need some, I guess, some guidelines on the bike trail. I'm an avid bicyclist. I came from Cleveland, Ohio. I rode, I biked to work every day, and I've had many accidents. And now with the scooters and the speed, they go 20 miles an hour. If you're going to allow the scooters and the pedals, you're going to see the golf carts. I mean, we need better signage. There are these little tiny signs that say "No Golf Cart." I'm just asking, maybe we could improve, maybe increasing the signage with the Golf Cart Committee, the Bike Path Committee, just to kind of make them a little larger in what we're allowed on the bike paths. There's always a lot on social media, a lot of complaints, and people arguing what we're allowed to have on the bike path or not. So if you could speak about that, you know, at a later time, that would be awesome. Again, McLean Spell Park, we've talked about this a few other times. Again, something I'm not really quite understanding. A lot of people have spoke out that the exercise stations don't really seem realistic. I've never heard anybody speak that they want the exercise stations. I think that we need to put our energy into the community center versus worrying about the exercise station. I don't really know who's going to use it, and I'd like to encourage each one of you to go to a class. Go spend one hour at a class and see what is happening in the classes and look at the equipment.
Thank you, Annette.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Patricia Leonard.
I'm Patricia Leonard. I live on Cedar Street. I am not prepared as everybody else, but I do want to address the "Pack It In, Pack It Out." Is this going to be forever? Are you going to see how it goes for six months and revisit this and reinstate what we now have and what seems to work? It's kind of one of those things, if it ain't broke, you don't fix it. I understand that 70 tons of trash was taken away. Well, if people are not responsible, what's going to happen to some of that trash? It's going to be left on our beach. Emerald Isle has done great things at refurbishing and nourishing the beach, but now it seems like maybe that's not going to be important, not important, but you're refurbishing, but yet you're not taking care of the trash, is just what I'm saying. I was appalled when I saw that on Facebook. I thought it was absurd. And what happens to those employees who used to pick up the trash?
They still work for the town of Emerald Isle, thankfully.
Okay. I did not think that not removing the trash would end up firing or letting these folks go. You know, they do an excellent job. I am proud to say that I have a place here, not big, but I've got a place at Emerald Isle. And I'm very proud of the beach as it is. It's clean. It's neat. Nice matters, so does clean and neat. My next thing is, you're going to have to consider paving Sound Drive, Cedar Street, my street, because it's a major thoroughfare. If there's a piece of heavy equipment, a tractor-trailer, it's going to go on Cedar Street, not up there on Lee, which also connects 58 to Sound Drive. It's going to come on Cedar Street. Also, Vogue Inlet. I'm one of those who travels on a golf cart, and sometimes you kind of need your back readjusted when you get through. It is important. Our golf carts are electric, but we are considering the environment with our electric golf carts. And thank you very much.
No more public comment? All right. Thank you all for being here, and thank you for your comments. I really appreciate it. Item number 10 on the agenda will be our consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye. Motion is carried. At this point, I believe, Sarah, you said we need a brief pause to reset our tech for the health insurance presentation, so we'll have just a minute or two while we adjust in the tech room back there. Say again? Okay, great. Waiting for a Zoom connection.
Hello?
Hi, is that you, Michelle? Michelle, are you there? Can you hear me? Michelle, are you there? Can you hear me? This is Jason Holland. Wait a second, we'll try one more time, or again. Michelle Indicott, this is Jason Holland. Ladies and gentlemen, give us just one minute, please. Trying to connect with Michelle Indicott here. Michelle, this is Jason Holland. Can you hear me?
How about now? Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now. Can you hear me?
I can. Thank you.
All right, great. At this time, I'd like to welcome Michelle Indicott with MedCost for our Emerald Isle Health Insurance Presentation. Michelle, thank you for being here. You have the floor.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you all inviting me, and I just want to kind of share, I'm not sure, are you able to see my screen?
Yes, well, we see, yes. Sorry.
Okay. Now, I just want to come tonight and just let you know, we do MedCost, myself, my name's Michelle Indicott, I'm the account manager, that works very closely with the League of Municipalities, along with Emerald Isle and with Sarah. And I just want to come and present to you what educating your members looks like, which is member and plan savings. So that's dollars that is saved for the members in the group and then also for the overall town's health plan. So with that being said, Sarah has done a wonderful job, and she has impacted over last year several different items, and there's a lot of items, but I pinpointed four to give you an idea of what she has done with member education. So 100% of claims were paid in network, which resulted in a savings for the town of $248,107. Now, that is an overall savings of 51%, almost 52% over last year, which is outstanding. Then there's ER utilization, and you know, if anybody knows, going to the emergency room is probably three or four times more than it is when you go to an urgent care or utilize telemedicine, and that has decreased over last year of 45%. And then the next thing is Teladoc. Teladoc is a telemedicine program that the town can utilize, and they have 75% of their members and dependents that are registered to use this product. This is also a positive impact on their ER utilization, and it also helps save the plan and members' out-of-pocket expenses. And then we have a personal care management and a case management program. And what that is, personal care management is a program that helps members that has like diabetes, high blood pressure, and then our case management program is a program that helps people with a more chronic, more chronic disease. And we have 90% participation in personal care management, and then compared to last year, it was 70%. And then 80% for the case management program compared to 63% last year. So I just want to say, Sarah has done a wonderful job educating members and showing them how to save money, which impacts the plan as well, saving dollars. So thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions from the board, from Michelle? Say again?
Price is not going up.
Price is not going up, that's good news. Any other questions from Michelle?
Well, see, that's what education helps you with, those premium prices, so.
Michelle, we thank you for being here with us via Zoom. We thank you for the update and bid you a great evening.
All right, I do y'all the same. Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you, ma'am. Have a great night.
You, too.
All right. Item number 12 would be our planning board appointments. We had four vacancies on the planning board. I'll open it up to the Board of Commissioners to discuss and/or make a motion. Any comments or concerns from the board? Questions?
No concerns from me, Mayor. I think that the work that's been done over the last, probably more than a year, by the planning board on the UDOs, it's a very important project. And the work that's been coming out of that group has been very good and transparent, and I think they're moving in the right direction, so I'll just leave my comment there.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions from the board? All right, if not, I'll ask for a motion to appoint up to four vacancies on the planning
Mayor, I'll make a motion to appoint Kenny Sullivan, Susan Manette, Ty Cannon, and Jay Wooton to new terms on the planning board that expire March 2025.
Thank you, ma'am. Motion's on the floor. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you very much. Item 13, I'll ask Planning Director Michelle Eitner to speak on our FEMA Preliminary Revised Firm Panel. Yes, ma'am.
I've got a PowerPoint coming up, but I'll keep this short and sweet. It's not necessarily the most exciting item, but we do have one of the many firm panels that covers Emerald Isle. The flood insurance rate maps is coming under update. All right. So in 2021, of these preliminary panels was adopted. It's bordering with Onslow County, and Onslow County moved forward before Carteret, so they moved, that panel moved forward. So I have that identified with a little green star, and now we're moving forward with the next one over, just teaser after teaser. The next firm panel, it's been revised and released for review. So this is our current firm panel. It includes the remainder of the West End, the Bridge, Village West, Emerald Plantation, K&amp;V Plaza area. This is the currently effective flood insurance rate map or firm panel. The special flood hazard area in Emerald Isle includes A flood zones and V flood zones. We know about that because of construction requirements, flood insurance policies. These are zones that have a 1% annual chance of flooding based on FEMA requirements. Shaded X zones, shown in yellow, have a 0.2% chance of flooding. That's usually called 500-year flood plain, and then X- And then X is even less frequent than that. So here on our current panel, we see VE flood zones on the Oceanside in green and AE flood zones on the Soundside in blue, with some AE zones on the North Side near the shorelines and canals, but mostly shaded X and X on the mainland portions. Our preliminary firm panel, which was revised following some appeal information, shows VE on the Soundside and Oceanside waters. The inclusion of some of the Soundside properties in what's called a limoie, the limit of moderate wave action. But primarily, we're looking at a reduction of the special flood hazard, the 1% chance area and shaded X coverage. So I'm going to kind of toggle between it and you can see that those colors are coming off of the, off of the island. So this is a small step towards updated flood maps for the town, but it's generally beneficial for properties within this panel. But FEMA does provide a process wherein an appeal period is available prior to adoption of these maps. That is now underway following some notification that FEMA did and is available until June 27. And we wanted to present it today just so that folks would be aware of it and they can look at more information on our website or contact staff at the office. Any questions for me?
Any questions for the board for Michelle? Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate you very much. All right, at this time, I'll ask for any comments from our town clerks here? Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Zap?
In addition to tonight's presentation and all the details we shared, there was some comments made that I wanted to help clarify. The town of Alas, if I purchased any electric vehicles, the town of Alas Police Department had brought forward a conversation to apply for a grant they had done. So we have supplied that grant, we can hear 100%, so there are no electric vehicles currently in our inventory. I would like to address the fact that we do have a lease vehicle program. There's revenue positive or revenue neutral, I'll give you a prime example. One of those comments are, we leased a vehicle for the police chief, which is Tony Grease, who had 25 years of service and retired. Chief Grease operated a vehicle approximately 31 months. I believe our total cost of ownership on that vehicle was $19,000 with some change. When we sold that vehicle, around $21,000, it made $1,900 back to the community, which in my experience, 20 years at this chair, we've never had a positive opportunity when it comes to vehicles. And that's duplicated or replicated with Chief Walker's Tahoe as well as community resource officers' forums. So I would like to sit here and tell you that our lease vehicle program saves nearly $246,000 in year one, approximately $140,000 in year two, and current year today over $123,000 back to this community to help defer tax rate increases. Additionally, I put our front line personnel who are police, fire, EMS, and public works workers in brand new vehicles that respond to you during calls, emergency. And those vehicles are now safer, using less fuel, and reduce our maintenance near here. With all of our vehicles, our I-0, 36-month, $36,000 out of taxation, our skip. The town of Alas, you do call town hall between the hours 8:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. You may hit Greg Hayes, who's up front, who's an exceptional human being, who you'd like to enter. We do track our calls, we have over 10,800 calls to the general administration line and almost 4,000 calls to the planning department 2022. And if our line drawed it up, we do apologize to you, but advanced as a cost control manager, you will receive the following message. Thank you for calling the town of Alas. All of our personnel are currently on another call. We apologize in names. And when we go through a phony tree process, it indicates, and I recorded it the last time, I'm not sure if I'm still the voice on there, but it indicates if you need planning, you press 1. If you need to come, you press 2. We don't want you to ever get a voice report to call. And we do make our very best to call you back before the close of business and/or immediate closing of holiday. And I do want to clear the air. We thank Anna Smith, who was our first public informations officer, who served us for two years. It's unfortunate we didn't train her to be a clerk. We did that on purpose as we were trying to reduce and control her overhead. She left the organization for substantial grades and went to Morehead City where she's now owning the public informations officer and not clerk. So Sarah, who is also a registered clerk, and I share those duties and we're not adding another human being. So I just wanted to clear the air on some of those things and I wanted to say thank you to this board. If anyone ever has a question, you can come to my office and I think this is going to tell you. We spent over three hours sharing with her the $15.37 million that we garnered in the last 36, 39 months. And I thank you, Lord, for helping to do that. Emerald Isle has the fees, nearly 15 to 20 years of overhead costs and expenses with those $15.37 million. If you ever have a question or a concern, we're usually there, 10 to 12, sometimes 14 hours a day. We're glad to continue to serve you well. It's a privilege and an honor. So I'm not sure where the misinformation is coming from. But I'm here to tell you that my mantra as a leader is the sit call. I tell you the truth. I tell it first. I tell it often. And I'm proud of the gentleman he had hired as a public informations officer, who is at $65,000 a year and comes at 50% of the industry's standard rate. And I think he's an exceptional addition to the best team I've ever worked with and the best community with exceptional human beings. And I'm just proud of what we do. And I'll be glad to start talking to you tomorrow about it as we continue on. And we're headed to Jacksonville to learn more about the changes in replicated equipment. And there's a big NC DOT, NC State symposium tomorrow. So with that being said, if you ever need anything, first initial, last name, emeraldisle@nc.org. Or if you come to the building, we open the door at 8:00 and you're more than welcome to stay past by. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Very well said. Commissioner Taylor?
Great meeting. Enjoyed the conversation. It's always makes you look, look and listen and that's what we're here for. So thanks for everybody speaking up and coming out and thanks for the people hanging out to the very end here. You get to see the credits run. So, but thank you very much and just happy to sit up here and very honored to hold this seat. So thank you all.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Finch?
No comment.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Masser?
Just one thing, I would ask you, if you have a question or concern about some, something, call town hall, call one of us, call somebody that knows the answer instead of believing what you see on Facebook. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Vogel?
Well said.
Understatement of the year, I'm sorry. Please proceed.
Matt, thank you for your comments. I was going to address some of those things. I'll just address one thing and keep it short. But a public informations officer post-COVID is even more important to town work. We live in a multi-generational community at the moment. And that is a very big challenge for town staff to ensure that we are meeting our goal of being transparent. It's not just a glorified social media manager. It is someone who not just helps us communicate to the town, but it also pushes the staff on how to make those communications happen. They literally coordinate every project that gets put in front of the town staff. And I mean, it's not a, not a glorified project manager, but those, the role is very big. And I would say, coming from a very strong marketing background, it's probably $160,000 a year job. So we're very fortunate to have Mark. I'm very excited about his energy and the work that, that we can do with that role going forward. And lastly, Mayor, I love you.
Love you too. Thank. Commissioner Norma?
Well, actually did mine with Cap Mathias, who's still here, which I thought he would have got gone by now. So I don't have any more planned remarks. The public comment was interesting tonight. What do y'all think? That was something, huh? Ooh, that was a scorcher. Yeah, come back, Jim. That's what they said, come back. We just meet once a month. What in the world? Uh, how about this? I'm gonna give, I'll give you a choice since I didn't have any planned remarks. But I would like to offer some additional comment on some items that were shared. And I'm glad they were shared. Y'all want to hear about trash or do you want to hear about percent of budget and salary? Only got time for one. You pick. What do you want to hear?
Trash.
I'll do one. Trash. So the short version on trash, I'd be happy to stay here and talk to you some more about things that we discussed and trying to figure out what to do with trash. To me, the problem, and the object is to start with the problem and find a solution. The problem with trash is, is that we get 100 and not 30 tons, 130 tons. And that trash is serviced by two guys in a truck. And we're still going to maintain the, the air, uh, cans on the beach that will still be serviced by the two guys in the truck that get in the bag. And then we take it back to dumpsters that we hide behind Fire Station 1 and Fire Station 2. We fill those dumpsters up and it's bad. And you probably have seen some of my posts on the Book of Many Faces showing pictures of this. Last year, if you recall, during the months of April, May, June, July, August, and September, I sat here and I said, this is going to come back and haunt us. We've got too much trash. We've got too much trash and we ain't got no place to put it. It's going to come back and haunt us. Y'all recall that? And it's come back to haunt us. The problem isn't necessarily getting the trash off the beach with two guys in a truck. It's what we do with it. We've got too much of it. So with 130 tons, the majority of that still comes from those 22 sites where the cans will be. Where the cans are being removed from, the rollout bins are just there. And we put our trash, just like at my house, my can has gone away. So when I come back from the beach, instead of putting it in a round can, I'm going to put it in a rollout bin. And then Simmons &amp; Simmons is going to transport that trash to the landfill. In other words, we will not have to find places to hide more dumpsters to hand pack all this trash, 130 tons of trash. Someone did ask via email, I got a phone call, well, Jim, did you consider, we, did you consider any alternatives? Sure. No cans. Didn't like that. Don't trust that. Did you consider other ways to get trash in large volume off the beach strand and then do something else with it? And that answer is yes. I have a picture of it. Mayor, I know I'm taking a lot of time.
You're fine, sir.
It's a great question, though.
I, I, I've been waiting for somebody to elaborate to the degree that you are. Please take all the time you need.
Well, my, my, I've got to do something with a large coffee from a little while ago, so it's not going to be much longer. So what other option was considered? Well, in theory, for about $300,000, we could buy a trash truck. Think of one half the size of the Blue Simmons truck and run it down the middle of the beach. You can't run up on the toe of the dune because it's too heavy. But could we be like Myrtle Beach or could we be like Virginia Beach? Albeit, they have hard-packed sand and a much deeper beach. Could we run one of these up and down the beach and mechanically dump cans? In theory, we could, but then we got to do something with the trash again. In theory, we would have to create our own transfer station, pour concrete, put up a shell building, dump a mini trash truck on the concrete, only to scoop it up and put it back in dumpsters. And so the reality is unintended, to me, we have an unintended consequence of being very successful as a destination to go to. And one of those unintended consequences is over 130 tons of trash to deal with. And it's just too much. We just physically, two guys in a truck and two to four construction dumpsters won't hold it anymore. So what we're asking, begging, pleading is help us all pitch in, let's try this. Simmons &amp; Simmons are carriers that everybody likes. Has agreed to service Ocean Drive some more if need be to dump those rollouts. But we just need help in relieving the two guys in the truck with a portion of that tonnage of trash to pick up, go, store, pick up again, transport off aisle. I don't know if I, I hope that helps, but yes, ma'am, thank you so much for that. And I'm nervous about it. I, I don't want our beach trash. I'm one of the volunteers that picks up trash. And yes, ma'am, you too, thank you for that. Thank you for your service. But let's help encourage others. Let's give it a try. If it doesn't work, we'll do something different, but we have to, we just can't physically take 130 tons of trash and hide it behind the fire department anymore. Can't do it. It's too much. Hope that helps.
If you find out that you need another trash can at a, at a walkway, would you foot one there?
Yes.
Yeah, well, we just, let's try it and be supportive, encourage others to try it, help explain it. The signs went out yesterday, today, something like that. It took a long time. Sorry about that.
You're fine, sir.
Thank you all for coming. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Keep it short as I can. Commissioner Norma, thank you so much. I've fielded a lot of phone calls, a lot of emails, a lot of in-person conversations. I, I email back and forth a little bit, but I love to interact with people, whether it's a good subject, bad subject, or something in between. I felt like a lot's lost in translation when it doesn't come out of your mouth and go into somebody's ears. And touching on trash just one more time. I've had so many conversations and not bad ones, just misinformed ones or not misinformed, but not informed enough. You know, we see pack it in, pack it out and you know, trash cans removed from the beach. And we stop reading right there and we go on Facebook and we make a post about it. It's true. They're taking all the trash cans off the beach. We got to put the trash in the back of the car. We got to take it back to Raleigh with us or we have to take it back to our rent or, or take it back home. And it couldn't be farther from the truth. And it's, uh, lack of a better term, it's frustrating that we don't get the whole story from where the whole story is supposed to come from first. Misinformation is, is, is not good on any level and regarding any subject. So whether it's trash, whether it's trees, whether it's beach driving, whether it's a dog park, get the information that you need from the horse's mouth, if you will. Read the whole book, read the whole first page. And if you still have questions, reach out to Matt, reach out to me, reach out to the Commissioners or the town staff. Get the whole story, get it from the author, get it from the shot callers that sit to my left and right. Then form your opinion, whatever it may be, whether it's, it's something that I or anybody else in this room would agree with or not. Doesn't matter, you know, we, we're all entitled to that. Get the information where it should come from, where it originated from. Because that's where it's going to be factual. Anywhere else, it is going to be misinformed, misinformation from one degree all the way, or 1% all the way up to 100. I would encourage you to do that and thank you for those that have, thank you for everybody that came to the meeting. But thank you for those that have stayed through the end of this because I learn something every time I come. I feel like you all are at least a little bit better informed than you were when you got here. It's why you came and I thank you for doing that. Matt? Man, I'm going to pat you on the back. I'm going to pat your staff on the back. You do, and your staff does, a fantastic job in my personal humble, sometimes ignorant opinion of executing the wishes of the five shot callers to set to the left and the right. I appreciate the job you do. I appreciate this job that the town staff does, those that you lead do. And I want to thank you for a job well done. I want to thank you for being a conduit for the Commissioners, for me, for every resident or visitor in this town. If they have a problem or if they have a question, you're always there, your staff is always there, hats off. I'll, I'll plead to the public, if you will. Matt is there. He's, he's front and center. He's the, uh, chief of staff, if you will. Go to him anytime you want to. Go to any staff member anytime you want to. I'll try to remind everybody, whether you're here or you're listening or whatever, if you tell somebody, Matt serves at the pleasure of this board and he serves well. And from a compensatory standpoint, is that right? He can do better, but he loves it here. And he loves people he works with, he loves the community he serves, and he does a fantastic job. And he serves at the pleasure of this board. Matt makes decisions after this board has tasked him with the projects that are at hand. If it waivers from what they put into play, he doesn't do it until he has permission. If it waivers from what they put into play, he doesn't do it until he has permission, if you will, or a new directive. Go to him, call on him, ask questions, get answers, if you don't like what you hear, I understand, I don't like everything I hear every day, uh, a lot of days. He is here and does a fantastic job of executing the wishes of the five people that sit around me that the majority of the voting public in Emerald Isle put in place to make those decisions. I, I'll, I'll ask you in closing to remember that, remember how our town works, remember how our town structure is set up, and remember that we are all available to you, and, uh, if we work together, everything will be alright. So about all I have to say about that, and, um, I'll save the personal note stuff, because I'm ready to go see my family. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Oh, favor? Good night.